Great, is this everyone we're expecting?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, good evening. It is 6:30 PM on the dot and I will call to order the August 12th meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Heffner.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Here.
And Commissioner Mullin.
Here.
Next up, we have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second, but I recuse myself from the minutes.
Okay, any objections on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
They moved.
Okay.
And I recuse myself.
Okay, any other commissioner discussion on the minutes?
Rob, can we confirm the date of the minutes?
Would be for the July 8th, 2021 meeting.
Okay, great.
And maybe we'll do, should we do a roll call vote on the minutes?
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullin.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
I recuse myself from the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, next up is public comment for items not on this evening's agenda. Are there any members of the public who are in attendance who would like to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda?
I do not see any hands raised.
And do we have anyone on the phone?
It looks like we have a few members of the public on the call, but no phone numbers.
Okay. All right, well, that gets us to continued business for the boundary GDP amendment, and I believe we have a request for a continuance from staff.
Yeah, sure. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much. We, due to kind of reduced numbers tonight, the applicant and staff chatted this afternoon and the applicant's going to request, respectfully request a continuance. We understand Commissioner Howe would like a little bit more time just to make sure that he has had all the, you know, time to review the minutes and the full meeting and so we want to be able to provide that time as well as Chair Brown unexpectedly was unable to attend. So that leaves us back with four members who would be kind of fully prepared to participate tonight. And so with that, staff supports the request for a continuance and would like to hear commissioner discussion on that.
Any commissioner discussion or questions for staff?
I don't have any concerns about that. I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't either. Did you say, Lisa, that you did discuss with the applicant and the, yeah?
Yeah, Mr. Bear, if you want to hop in and just let the commission know that you're in agreement with the request for continuance.
Yeah, no, thank you. Appreciate that, Lisa. Yeah, we talked about it earlier and we prefer to go that route if you're okay with it.
Okay.
Great. So I think the next question is dates. Your next regular date, as you know, you have to continue to a date certain. So your next regular date is September 9th. Your overflow date is August 26th. The September 9th agenda is not looking particularly full. There will be other agenda items on there, but it's really at your discretion. So staff and the applicant are available on the 26th if you'd like to get this one through earlier. If not, the 9th is your next regular meeting.
I might ask the applicant, given we've already pushed you down the road once, as to whether you have a preference, Mr. Bear.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to do the 26th if we can.
Do I hear a motion either for the 26th or September 9th?
I'm happy to accommodate that. So I'd make a motion to continue until August 26th.
So I'm okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm okay for either one of those dates too. So I would, I don't know if I need to second the motion or should I let Commissioner Williams comment on that before seconding the motion?
Yeah, I will not be able to make August 26th.
Commissioner Mullin, sometimes you have a conflict on that night. Is that right?
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. I do, but my interim director role is winding down and will be wound down before that next meeting date. So I foresee that I would be able to attend the Planning Commission meeting on the 26th, so.
So I think, I didn't check with Chair Brown as to see his availability. So it sounds like we will have a quorum for the 26th. So I think it's up to you, Mr. Bear, I think if you're comfortable with the numbers that we have, knowing we'd have potentially five on the 26th. And then if we have some date challenges, we can work through that. But it sounds like the 26th is enough to at least hold a meeting.
If we can get to five, that'd be great.
Great. So I believe we have a motion pending a second. Do we have a second?
Then I'll finish up with my second. Maybe I should finish my thought. Second on the motion.
Great. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mullin.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
So I'm voting on whether to accept the continuance for that date or just in general.
The continuance to August 26th at 6:30 PM.
Um, I'm going to say no, because I'd rather have it in September.
Okay, Commissioner Deal.
Yes. I agree the motion carries. So we will hope to see you again, Mr. Bear, on August 26th.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to let the members of the public know that we're, you know, sometimes this happens from time to time. We have these late minute changes. And so we respect the fact that you did take the time to attend tonight and we will hope to continue to win, get this matter resolved on the 26th of August. So just want to acknowledge your presence and thank you for your participation.
Indeed. Moving on to new business, our next item is a public hearing on a proposed municipal code amendment regarding swimming pools and spas. So I will now open the public hearing on this request. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and to provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function of participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. Staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement and I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue the item to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. With that, I would ask whether any planning commission members have any disclosures to make. Hearing none. I'll turn it over for staff for a presentation.
Excellent. So I am trying to find my presentation here. It's not pulling up on my share screen mode. That's interesting. Hold on one second. My apologies here. Of course, now it's. Not sure why it's not sharing. Like Zoom did an update. Oh, my goodness. My apologies. Rob, do you get the normal share screen? Are you, if you share screen, do you get everything?
So I'm having technical troubles too. I cannot get on on my computer. My speaker won't connect. But I think I've had this issue, Lisa.
Yeah.
Because I, so I think you'll, you won't see your screen anymore, but there's a, when you do share screen, there's a couple of things to click on still. I forget what they go.
I don't have any options to click on a PowerPoint. So you know what? We're going to just talk through this one. I don't think that the presentation is going to be critical for understanding, understanding the content. So I just want to note real quick that this application did meet public notice requirements. So we did notice that in all respects consistent with the municipal code. And tonight, we're here to consider kind of what we would consider a cleanup code amendment. It's really not intended to fundamentally change any of the standards that we apply today. Really, it's just intended to provide consistency and ensure that we're keeping the codes up to date. And so essentially, the issue is, back in 1973, our city zoning code adopted regulations for fences and gates for surrounding swimming pools. Since that time, and that code has never been amended. So those codes have been in place since 1973. Since that time, as you know, building codes have advanced significantly with respect to swimming pool safety. And so we also do adopt from time to time on a regular basis. We're currently under the 2018 building code. And so those codes now have extensive regulations for safety standards around swimming pools and, you know, that are broader, much broader than our zoning code. So fences, gates, alarms, locking windows, pool covers, what have you, things of that nature. And so really what we're finding with applicants who come in with a swimming pool, for one, don't understand that the zoning code also applies. And so we get some pushback and challenge from property owners, particularly in a circumstance where a PUD, say, only allows, say, a 36, 42, or 48 high inch, you know, inch high fence in their rear yard, right? Because then they would technically have to apply for, or build a secondary perimeter fence. So that's, and for, you know, we assume it's just because of COVID, but people are spending more times and investing in their property, the number of swimming pool permits have increased significantly over the last couple of years. So we've decided to elevate this and get this cleaned up, just for the benefit of our residents, to make sure that we are not being burdensome with this fence standard. In addition to that, kind of the other primary thing within this code amendment that we are hoping to achieve is related to hot tubs or spas. So the building code terms these as spas. So we're keeping that terminology consistent. But our zoning code is currently silent with respect to the application of setbacks or lot coverage or what have you. And so staff typically, these are more than 30 inches above grade. And so typically, once you have a structure more than 30 inches above grade, it needs to meet, you know, accessory setbacks. And so we've been applying that standard to hot tubs, but we'd like to codify that to make sure that, for one, that we really have the policy direction to do so. And that's consistent with, you know, the codes and ordinances that we have on the books. So that's kind of the secondary intent here. The setback standards that you see in the code, which really basically say swimming pools and spas need to meet accessory structure setbacks, and then further, they can't be located within any front yard or side yard setback. That remains the same, but we just do want to kind of tee that up for confirmation. So that's really kind of fundamentally what we're hoping to achieve tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Lisa, just a quick question. So based on where we are today, I mean, do we have homeowners who are erecting secondary fences around their pools because they need to meet this kind of messiness?
So this has come up. There have been a few instances where, yes, because we didn't, we didn't really anticipate that this would come up in more than kind of a one-off issue. We gave them a couple paths. One was apply for variance. They elected not to do so. But there are systems that they have found, and a couple homeowners have used these subsequently, which are a fence that meets the zoning code, but it's kind of an internal pole mount, like a, it's hard to describe. It's, they basically drill holes in kind of the concrete perimeter and then they can install this fence system internal to their property. And so that's been a workaround that a couple homeowners have invested in as a workaround to this code. But really, we don't feel that that's necessary if they're meeting Title 15 in the building code.
And so in a situation where, you know, if this resolution were to pass, Title 17 goes away and 15 rules, right? That means then, I guess, what happens to that homeowner that has this covenant or, I guess, a PUD requirement that it can't be over a certain height? Does that rule over 15? Or how does that work?
No, so that's a great question. So if they don't, on their, if a property comes in with a pool permit or to add a pool, under the building code, if they don't have a fence, a proposed fence or an existing fence that meets the fence requirement, then they have other options. So locking covers, alarm systems, things like that. So a fence is not the only option to ensure safety. And so a property owner could elect to still do an internal kind of secondary fence if they choose, but the Title 15 gives them other options.
Okay, so if a PUD said that they can't have a fence over 42 inches?
Yep.
Then they would still have to do, 15 would say they have to do something in addition to that 42 inch fence?
Yes.
Okay, but obviously this allows them more flexibility.
Yes.
I got you. All right, so I have.
I have one quick question, Lisa. I should have looked this up. I'm just curious, is there a minimum size where a swimming pool is no longer called a swimming pool? I realize it probably doesn't, isn't going to come up very often, but I'm just curious.
I don't know the answer to that. I can pull up the code and just check applicability. But I don't know offhand the answer to that question.
I imagine many size, and many small sizes are captured and as well, they probably need to be. So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really kind of what we're hoping is that, you know, through Title 15.
Yeah.
Because they do, I mean, there's a whole, basically a whole building code section, you know, just related to swimming pools and spas, that they are capturing those best practices. But I can look up that answer if you'd like. It might take me a minute here. I'm not familiar with this code, but if people want to keep moving on with questions, I can kind of scroll.
Or I can too.
It's okay.
Is there a depth maximum?
Yeah.
For pools?
Um, let me check. So.
Well, this is. I think there is a depth. I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah.
That triggers the safety, either the cover or the fencing safety requirements within the building code.
Okay.
And that determines the height of the fence?
No, 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 the height, so if you trigger the fence safety requirement, the fence has to meet minimum height and opening requirements. It has to have automatic gates and things like that. So does, the height of the fence is standard regardless of the depth of the pool if it triggers.
Okay.
So I have a question as to two things. First, the setback requirements for swimming pools, given that they typically aren't, you know, I suppose it would be one thing if it was an above ground pool, but given that they're not typically above grade, is the, is application of the setback requirements, is that pretty standard? Are we just following what other jurisdictions do? Is there sort of a theory, a safety theory of some kind there?
No, so that's a good question. I did not research other communities, neighboring communities, regulations with respects to setbacks. So I can't answer you, but we can bring that back to you if you'd like. But generally, this maintains the existing code, again, which has been placed since 1973. I think when staff thinks about, you know, kind of why you would apply a setback to a swimming pool, even though you're right, commonly they're below grade, although sometimes they're above ground, you know, kind of there are noise and activity and things like that, that I don't know if a setback is going to really prevent, you know, impacts into your, into your neighbor, but into your neighboring property. But I really think having that kind of more interior to your yard is more appropriate from kind of a just perception of impact to your neighbors.
Yeah, and I would just add that there are other cities, definitely in the metro area, that have setbacks for swimming pools and other recreation type structures, regard, you know, regardless of how much they project above the ground. And the reason that some cities choose to adopt those setbacks are exactly what Lisa described, is it's really kind of a privacy and impact from that activity, you know, between neighbors. So I think that's probably the intent, why we have a pool setback, even though most of them are below grade.
And then my question, my second question probably has a similar answer, which is as to the, I won't even ask about front yards, but as to the side yards, it seems like if you're in a weirdly shaped lot, I mean, maybe there's a good argument for having your pool in the side yard. I just want to make sure we've thought all the way through and we're not sort of arbitrarily excluding people from having a swimming pool who might want to stick it in a different place than most.
Sure. So really, the regulation applies to like a street side. So say you have a corner lot, not necessarily a lot where you've got, you know, kind of folks on both sides of you in your rear yard. So it's really just keeping it kind of within that rear yard area of a street, of a corner property. I think if you have a circumstance where someone has an unusual lot, or they have a pie shape or a wedge or a tree, really that's intended to be set up for a variance. So if we have these kind of one-off, unique situations where a lot configuration is, you know, unique and challenging, then really I think that's the intent of the Board of Adjustment to consider a request like that. But really, from the setback perspective, it's really kind of that street side and so the corner lots.
So but on the side yard, just to be clear, I mean, there's a setback either way, but my understanding of what we have is you can't even have it outside the setback. You know, if you have a side yard that's 40 feet wide for some reason, even if you're beyond the setback, still you couldn't put a pool there without a variance?
So I guess I'm not, I'm not, I wish I had a site plan or an image I could put up on the screen and we could talk through it. I guess I'm not entirely sure how to describe it. But so the street side setbacks on a corner lot for accessory structures are usually deeper than your principal structure. In most zone districts, that's not always the case. Old Town is different. Old Town allows accessories closer to the street than principal structures. But basically, yes, I mean, the intention is really to kind of tuck the swimming pool back into the most private part of the yard, rather than having it out closer to either the street, the corner, you know, kind of the secondary side and primarily the, you know, the front side or the front setback as well. So that is what the regulations would require. But happy to bring back other options for you and a site plan if you want to talk through that.
No, I, no, I, you know, I'm not pressing for anything in particular. I just want to make, I understand what we're doing and that, I want to make sure we're treating all the sort of lot shapes somewhat equally and that it's not sort of arbitrary for those who have large backyards.
No, I mean, I do think from a consistent perspective, this is consistent with, you know, kind of all accessory structures and consistent with how we've been applying the regulations throughout the community for decades.
That's good enough for me.
Okay.
And one thing I would just note, Vice Chair Heffner, is that in a neighboring lot to ours, this is a, maybe another just a little supporting concept for having setbacks is the, I mean, this, in our situation, it's kind of a both, a little above and a little below. But just sort of the construction activity and also the idea of being able to make a repair or something on the facility itself, it's nice to have some extra room around the edge of the pool that where you wouldn't necessarily have to be getting into, you know, like dealing with a property line fence or something. So just another reason why having a rear setback, or excuse me, having the yard setbacks applied to the, to the feature, to the pool feature, it provides, I guess, just sort of some extra construction, repair, access around the feature in the yard, is what was what I've noticed with our situation. So, yeah. But I agree. I think, I appreciate your interest in seeing and thinking about whether or not it makes sense for setbacks to apply. I think that's not, I think that's a great thing for us to think about in these situations, so.
Great. Well, unless there are other commissioner questions of staff, I will go ahead and open up the public comment portion of this public hearing. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to say anything?
Just remind the public, it's star nine if you're on your phone or the raise hand button if you'd like to let us know that you'd like to share thoughts on this. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, hearing no public comment, and assuming we don't have further staff comments, I will now close the public hearing. The planning commissioners will deliberate on what we've heard from staff during deliberation. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Would anybody like to start us off?
Sure, I could start us off. Makes complete sense to me to clean up some of the old language that's been in place since 1973 with what Title 15, looks like it's well-maintained and best practices are incorporated on a regular basis. So to the points about setbacks and accessory, et cetera, I think it's all, it all makes sense. So I'm in favor.
I'll just quickly hop on. I totally agree with what Commissioner Deal just said. I'm fully in support of this, too.
Yeah, I think, my opinion is that this clears up some ambiguity from some of the citizens. So I think that that's always a good service for Louisville citizens.
Well said.
I ditto all of the comments, especially Commissioner Howe.
And I agree as well. Do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12, Series 2021, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending Louisville Municipal Code Section 17.16.170 concerning swimming pools and spas.
A second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Deal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heffner.
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mullin.
Yes.
The motion carries. With that, I will close the new business portion of our hearing and ask whether there are any planning commission comments.
Just in terms, Lisa, got your email today about the overlay, if you wanted to cover that?
I will, if you're ready to go to staff comments, happy to. So yeah, absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up. Yeah, you all should have received an email earlier today inviting you to participate in stakeholder interviews for the Old Town Overlay Project. And so as we've mentioned previously, we're about to embark on a rewrite of the Old Town Overlay, which is the neighborhood surrounding downtown. You all will have a critical role in that. Also, understanding that you all don't administer that code. And so your familiarity with the actual code itself, we recognize, is, you know, going to be limited. But we're hoping that you all can take the time over the next couple of weeks to at least skim the code, have an idea of the structure and the framework of it, as well as take some, spend some time in the neighborhood. I really would encourage you to drive, walk, bike, whatever you have you, over the next few weeks and visit the different parts of the Old Town area, paying attention to character, massing, architecture, things like that. And then when you have a minute, hopefully in the next few days, if possible, that's okay if you don't, we sent out a doodle poll. And so we're going to be scheduling interviews in groups of two, hopefully with the boards, you know, that you are partnered up with someone on your board. But if not, we're going to just do our best to get everyone accommodated. And so with that, you'll be meeting with our consultant team. So I'm not sure if you've heard, we've selected a group of three different consultants. So it's Pelona Architects and Urbness and Peter Park, who was former planning director in Denver, and then Meta Urban Design. And so she'll be supporting them with graphics. So we have a great team. We're excited to kick this off. And your role is very important. So I'm hopeful that you all have some time to participate. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. If those dates don't work for you, just reach out to me separately and we'll find a time to get you interviewed outside of the times in that window. Any questions?
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about, you mentioned that, you know, we don't typically administer this. So can you talk about what the mechanisms are that, that does administer it? And then I guess what are some of the, love to know some of the, I guess, hotly contested, debated issues that are kind of percolating that maybe we should be aware of?
Absolutely. So I'll answer your first question first. So from time to time, I think
Absolutely. So I'll answer your first question first. So from time to time, I think the Old Town Overlay has been amended maybe three or four times since its original adoption in the mid nineties. So Planning Commission participates through the code amendment process anytime those have been updated. But it's been, oh goodness, maybe twenty fourteen since you all um, have looked at that as a group. So I don't know, maybe Commissioner Moline might be the only one who's ever really kind of had any um, commissioner involvement from the code. So generally speaking though, because of that, it's an adopted code. It's the residents, architects and developers who are building and remodeling and doing additions and scrapes and rebuilds in the Old Town area who um, are the users of this code. And so staff then, our role in that really is review of building permit applications. So when a building permit comes in, um, planners always look at every building permit that has anything to do with zoning, you know, to ensure compliance. And so we're looking at kind of the elements within the Old Town Overlay include um, a floor area ratio. That's our only neighborhood that includes a floor area ratio requirement, which is more of a volume type regulation. We look at lot coverage, setbacks, overall height. Um, the Old Town Overlay also has a roof pitch requirement. So it's one of our few zone districts that in addition to height, actually regulates the roof pitch on, on the structure. So we are paying attention to that. Um, trying to think what else, accessory, primary setbacks, things like that. So there's a few specialized standards within the Old Town Overlay. And so really, we're gonna be looking at all of, all of the regulations. Um, so potentially we're open up, opening up the whole book for kind of what it wants to be and based on everyone's feedback. So when you, you know, your second question, kind of what do we hear? You know, we hear principally, we hear concern when there's a new build going up. And so whether that actually relates to the code itself or just the fact that there's change next door, you know, sometimes, sometimes it's just the change itself that's the problem. In other cases though, I do think that there's massing incompatibility. I think there's size incompatibility, um, potentially on some properties when you look at the existing context of Louisville. You know, we have some really large lots in Old Town. We have some really small lots in Old Town. And sometimes these are right next to each other. And so by virtue of how the code is set up, you know, it could result with a really big structure right next to a really small structure. And so um, you know, those are some of the things that we hear. You know, again, height, massing, things like that. And then just, you know, some of it just has to do with change. And so we really want to hear from everyone as far as what really are the issues? You know, is this, um, is this a problem or what's working, what's not working? So public perception and all of the stakeholders as well. And then we'll ultimately, that will develop um, a diagnostic report. So you all will present, be presented that information. So you'll participate in the stakeholder interviews. We'll do some public process. We're doing a lot of data analysis um, with a consultant team. All of that will culminate in the diagnostic report of kind of here, what we've heard, here where we think the issues are. We'll bring that to you um, and Historic Preservation Commission, and then ultimately to City Council. And then the diagnostic report and the feedback we hear from that then sets the direction for any changes and updates to the code, which then you all will participate through again. Um, and then finally, as a recommending body to City Council for adoption.
Great. Super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on that project? Okay. I can't think of any other staff updates at this time. Rob, am I missing anything?
I can't think of anything.
Okay.
All right. Just to circle back with any other planning commission comments, I think we, we jumped ahead to staff comments. Anyone else? Hearing none, maybe we could just um, hear briefly about what we're gonna see on September ninth?
Sure. So um, yes, August twenty-sixth, you'll consider the foundry. And then September ninth, we have um, two potential PUD amendments. I'm not sure we're gonna get them both ready by then, but one is for the McDonald's over um, by the former Kohl's property. There's a minor PUD amendment for some site changes. And then the other would be a PUD and SRU for car wash out at the St. Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus. So one of those pad lots out in front of the industrial building. Both of them are a bit iffy now. So as soon as we know, we'll be making that call in the next week if those are gonna be ready to go. So we'll let you know if they're not and if the meeting's canceled. And I'm not aware of any other cases that would potentially be ready on September ninth.
And, and Lisa, I thought of the announcement, since we won't see him till September. The next time you see Lisa, um, there's gonna be some temporary staff transitions going on, um, starting at the end of this month. So uh, I'm not sure if all of you know, you may all know, but the city manager um, recently decided to um, to move on from her position here with the city. So we're in transition at the city manager level. And the city council's initiated a process to hire a new city manager, which, you know, usually takes five or six months or more sometimes. So we're doing some staff shuffling. Uh, Megan Davis, the deputy city manager, will very likely become an interim uh, city manager as they're going through the hiring process. I'm gonna be helping within the city manager's office during this time with some of Megan's work. Working a little bit in the planning uh, realm, but mostly working in the city manager's office to help backfill work there. So Lisa's going to be um, appointed as the interim planning and building director, starting August thirtieth. But she's basically taking my role while I'm working up in the city manager's office, probably for five or six months is our best guess. So just a little transition, um, you'll probably see, not that you don't see a lot of Lisa already, but you'll probably see less of me for sure.
We still have access to Rob behind the scenes. Thank goodness. Yeah. So anyway, yeah, that'll be coming up in the next few months. So thanks for that, Rob. So yeah, I don't have anything further.
Thanks. Thank you, Rob and Lisa for stepping up to lend, lend a, lend a hand and assist when, as the city goes through that process. So thank you very much indeed.
Definitely.
Thanks.
And exciting to uh, even be interim, you know?
One way to look at it, right?
Yeah, Moline, or Jeff, you can probably share your, your experiences with me later. All good. So thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Hearing no objections, we'll uh, see everyone on the twenty-sixth, I hope, except for Commissioner Williams.
That is correct.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thanks guys. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye bye.